Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'm going to call the Auburn Study Session Meeting scheduled for Monday, November 10, 2026, to order. This meeting is held both virtually and in person, and you can see the information on your agenda. Sean, will you please call, roll?
The Premier Rigs.
Here.
Councilmember Amer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Sturgis.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Excuse.
Councilmember Trump Mamo.
Here.
Sean, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, Chair.
Any announcements, reports, or presentations?
No, Chair.
Okay. I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to Councilmember Kate Baldwin before her special focus area.
Thank you. As Chair of the Finance and Internal Services Special Focus Area, we'll begin with Ordinance Number 7004. Director Thomas, will you take us through?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to hand this over to Frank Downer, our Financial Planning Manager, to introduce the topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Jamie mentioned, I'm Frank Downer, the Financial Planning Manager. You may remember me from such hits as the last utility rate study presentation approximately two council meetings ago. So please allow me to read you the updated version of what we're going to be covering tonight. Again, the City of Auburn provides water, sewer, and stormwater services to its utility customers. In 2025, the city contracted with FCS Group to perform a water sanitary sewer and storm drainage utility rate study to review the adequacy of existing rates and propose new rates as appropriate. The FCS study elements completed to date include a review of the revenue requirements for each utility, which encompasses the costs that the city needs to recover on an ongoing basis from utility ratepayers, a cost-of-service analysis that determines the relative burden each customer class places on the utility, a comparison of existing revenues with the cost-of-service results then indicates whether each class is paying its fair share of costs for each utility system. And new tonight, we have a review of system development charges, which are one-time charges imposed on new development or expanded connection to the system, and a review of our wholesale rates. So this discussion will review the work performed by FCS Group and summarize their findings. At the end, we will propose new rates in Ordinance 7004, which we propose to be effective 1-1-2026. And we will be bringing that ordinance back to council next week on Monday, 11/17. And now I will turn it over to FCS, Brooke here.
Thanks, Frank. All right, so Brooke Tisha with FCS, also back with you over the last couple of weeks since our last discussion, to update you on the utility rate study. So in terms of our overview, I'm going to give a brief background, and then we're going to walk through a summary of the findings again. So we'll work through the revenue requirement, cost of service, and rate design, just to remind you what we talked about a couple of weeks ago. We're going to add some additional components to that based off of some questions that were asked last time. And then we're going to shift gears a little bit to talk about system development charges, as Frank mentioned, as well as those water rates, before talking about next steps. So in terms of the background, again, this comprehensive rate study started earlier this year in 2025. We were talking with you a couple of weeks ago, working through revenue requirement, cost of service, and rate design for the retail water sewers and stormwater systems. And tonight's focus is going to be, again, a summary of those revenue requirements, cost-of-service, and rate design elements. We're going to bring back a little bit of discussion on the low-income discount component that was asked about, as well as that stormwater rate design piece, before we shift gears into system development charges and wholesale rates. So first, in terms of the revenue requirement summary, again, this is where we're determining the overall amount of revenue that we need to bring in to satisfy all the fiscal obligations of the utility. And what we saw from the water utility is that we're looking at 7.8% rate increases from 2026 through 2030, before that drops to 3.75%. Across the three-year rate-setting period, that results in about a $3.87 impact, moving up to about a $4.50 impact to a single-family water customer.
I'm sorry, just a little louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that 7.8% rate increase results in about a $3.87 impact, moving to about $4.50 for that single-family bill. Looking at the sewer utility and the Auburn portion of those rate increases, we're forecasting need for 2% annual rate increases throughout the six years of timeframe. If we're looking at just that three-year study period here, that would be about a 65 cent impact, moving up to about 67 cents to a single-family sewer bill for the Auburn portion. And then finally, on stormwater, we're looking at 3.25% rate increases throughout the six-year timeframe, concentrating on the three-year rate-setting period. That's about a 63 cent impact, increasing to about 67 cents by 2028, again, for that single-family bill. When we pull those all together in this combined residential bill impact, we see that's about a 5.1% to 5.2% impact combined for a single-family residence, or about $5.14 in 2026, increasing to an impact of about $5.84 monthly by 2028. So we did just want to take some time to talk about the low-income rate impacts. I know that was a question that we had the last time. So what we looked at here was to try to identify what that impact could be to our revenue if we expanded our discount program. So right now, the city provides for low-income disabled, low-income senior discounts, but doesn't just have that generally. So if we were to expand that, we have to make some assumptions about what that could look like. So we looked at some census data to determine the poverty rate in the area and applied that rate to our overall single-family accounts to get an estimate of how many customers could we have on that program. So that's where we arrived at that assumed impact from about 1,000 customers that might utilize that at a 50% reduction rate, so equivalent to what we're providing for those senior and disabled discounts. If we were to, again, make that adjustment, that does mean that our other utility customers need to make up the difference to achieve that revenue neutrality. So if we did that, we'd be looking at about an 80 cent per month impact to a single-family water bill. That's about 1.62%, about 54 cents for the sewer bill. That's about 1.68% of the overall revenue, and about 16 cents for stormwaters. That's about 0.86%. That's about $1.50 to that typical single-family bill, assuming that we had these 1,000 customers receiving this additional discount. So we're also showing some sample bills there, so you can see this would be incremental to the rate increases that were already shown. So again, that 7.8 for water would be 9.42 to, again, just achieve revenue neutrality, and we would see that same kind of incremental add to the sewer and the stormwater portion. And my understanding is that Director Thomas wanted to speak a bit on the recommendations here.
Yes, thank you. So we feel that we have a lot more work to do in looking forward into a rate subsidy program for our low-income programs. Brooke was very gracious in running some rough numbers and some scenarios, just to get a rough idea of how we think that this could possibly impact, how the subsidized rates would impact other ratepayers. But we really want to look more closely. What our recommendation is to give us an opportunity to continue working with FCS into the first part of 2026, so we can really analyze the impacts on the entire system. I'm concerned that we might be creating undue hardship when we're trying to do something good. For instance, a lot of our low-income individuals are going to be living in multifamily apartment complexes, and they're not going to be able to take advantage of the benefit of the low-income bill because they're paying, generally paying, to their apartment complex. And a multifamily apartment complex wouldn't be taking advantage of the low-income rates. So while a reduced rate might help our folks living in single-family homes, it's not going to be able to help, and it may actually adversely impact those living in multifamily apartment complexes. I think that the question raised a couple of weeks ago was a good one, and we do want to look into what are some other options, perhaps rebate programs or other ways that we can help our low-income families that are utilizing our utility system. That's why we're asking to continue considering the rates that we've already proposed, that FCS has put together for us, and give us an opportunity to look at low-income rates into 2026, and maybe come to council with a proposal for the 2027 and 2028 years.
Councilmember Yolanda?
Can we ask questions now, or do you want us to ask questions after your time?
I'm fine with questions now.
Okay. I wanted to know about the mobile parks. There's a lot of low-income mobile parks over on the south end, and are they going to be affected, or can they qualify for this low-income rates?
Generally speaking, those mobile home parks are paid, it's the park that pays the bill. They're individually metered, but it's the mobile home park that is responsible for paying the bill. Therefore, most of those folks would not qualify as a reduced income or a low-income, single-family home rate.
Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Okay. So in terms of our cost-of-service summary, again, this is where we're taking that overall revenue pie, and we're allocating it to our customer classes to determine whether our classes, the revenue that we're bringing in from our classes of service, is in alignment with the cost causation. And what we saw from our water utility results here, we give about a 10% plus or minus range of reasonableness, because we know costs fluctuate year to year. What we saw from the water utility, though, is that all of our classes are within that range of reasonableness, so we're not suggesting or recommending any cost-of-service adjustments at this time. I mean, you're going to see very similar results for sewer and stormwater. Sewer also within that range of reasonableness, so we're, again, not recommending any cost-of-service adjustments, but rather rates being applied to each class equally. So finally, here's stormwater, very same story. We're really kind of within that cost-of-service range of reasonableness, so again, rates would be applied across the board. From a rate design perspective, the one update that we had for you all here was based off of the stormwater rate design component. So the last time that we met, we mentioned that we would be bringing for a credit category for single-family stormwater accounts, so that's what we're showing here. New stormwater accounts can be all into this credit category if they have onsite stormwater detention or water quality infrastructure improvements. There's about 685 accounts that currently qualify for this credit. That would be a rate impact of about 0.26%, but the stormwater utility can absorb that change. So we're not suggesting that there would be any other rate structure changes. Instead, we'll just apply the single-family with detention and water quality credit. It's also in alignment with the non-single-family detention and water quality. Okay, so now we're going to switch gears a bit to talk about system development charges. These are different than those ongoing monthly rates that we've been talking about so far. So a system development charge is that one-time charge that a new customer is going to pay when they connect to the system, or if they're looking for expanded capacity within the system, often through redevelopment. And it is governed by the RCW 35.92.025 that grants the authority for these charges to cities. It is supposed to represent a unit of capacity in the system. The revenue from those charges can be used on capital costs and associated debt service, but it cannot be used on ongoing operating and maintenance expenses. It typically consists of two parts, and we're going to talk about this a bit more, but it's about the asset costs for those assets that are in the ground providing service today, as well as our future capital infrastructure projects in the planning period as well. The last time that the city updated these charges was in 2014. Annually, it has been adjusted based on the construction cost index to try to keep up with inflation over time. So here, we're going to talk a bit more about the methodology or how we actually calculate that charge. So ultimately, we're going to have our existing and future cost bases are going to be our numerator, and we're going to divide it by our total system capacity for each system, and that's going to determine our overall system development charge. So when we're looking at our existing costs, these are our existing assets that are in the ground today, and we have to use their original cost based on the RCW. So that means if it was installed in 1980, that's $1980 that we have to use to represent that asset. From that asset base, we also remove any contributed assets. So if there were developer donations, or if there are assets paid for through other fees like meters, we'll remove those from the cost basis. We also remove what we call a provision for asset retirement. So because we're looking at future infrastructure costs as well, we know some of those future costs, they're going to replace some assets that we have on the books right now, so we're making an adjustment to recognize that there is some repair and replacement of assets going on, so we don't double charge. Then we are actually allowed to add interest up to a maximum of 10% in 10 years, not to exceed the original cost of the asset. So based on that RCW, we are allowed to add that interest provision to the existing cost basis, and we will do that for each utility. And then finally, we'll make one more adjustment here for the net debt principal outstanding. So for this adjustment, we look at the cash on hand and compare it to the total outstanding debt principle of each utility. And if there is more outstanding debt than there is cash on hand, then we'll make an adjustment for that debt, recognizing that a new connection will pay for that through their monthly rates when they connect. Now finally, on the future cost basis, this is the other side of that numerator, we're going to use those future capital plans over the planning period as those identified costs. We'll make a couple adjustments there, pulling out any ineligible projects like plans or studies. Those aren't physical assets, and then backing out any contributions. So if we know there's grant contributions, we'll remove those from the future cost basis as well. Okay, so now we can get into the actual numbers associated with each of the utilities. You'll see the water, sewer, and stormwater calculations for the existing cost basis in the columns to the right. For the original cost of assets, we have about $183 million for water, $118 million for sewer, and about $107 for storm. We will back out contributed assets, about $40 million for water, about just shy of $50 for sewer, and about $28 million for stormwater. We can add that interest provision, like I mentioned, so that's about a little over $50 million for water, and just about $30 million for sewer and stormwater. And then we're backing out, again, that provision for asset retirement, so reducing the cost basis for water by about $17.7 million, about $14.2 for sewer, and just over $9 for stormwater. And then water is the only one that has the debt principal outstanding adjustment because they've got more debt than cash on hand, so we make an adjustment of $3.2 million there. That brings our total existing cost basis for water to $173.1 million, $85.2 million for sewer, and just over $100 million for stormwater. To that existing cost basis, we're going to add costs from the future cost basis as well, so this is that future-looking capital plan. For the water utility, that's $200.7 million, and for sewer, about $68.4 million. Stormwater, a little less, at $61.6 million. Again, we do make an adjustment for grants. We've got $2.5 million in identified grants for the water utility, and just about a half a million for stormwater. So that brings our future cost basis for water to $198.2 million, $68.4 million for sewer, and about $61.1 for stormwater. So those two costs make up our numerator, and our denominator is our system capacity. So typically, to identify system capacity, we're going to rely on our comprehensive planning documents. All three of the city's utilities have most recent updates to those in 2024, so we've got some really good and new data to utilize for these capacity elements. Water comprehensive plans look very specifically at capacity by function, so it may be different for storage and pumping and supply and treatment, and we'll use those capacities by function to ultimately come up with this weighted capacity value that's utilized in the charge. But about 37% of available capacity for the water utility, that's about 37,000 MCEs or meter capacity equivalents. On the sewer side, again, looking at the comprehensive plan, utilizing that flow forecast through 2044, provides about 25% of future capacity for the sewer system, or about 43,000 residential capacity equivalents. On the stormwater side, we're aligning, again, with that same growth rate that we used for sewer, so 25% future capacity on the stormwater system, brings us to about 91,000 equivalent service units. So now, in calculation of the charge, again, we're going to take those total costs and divide them by total system capacity. So on the water side, we'd see a total SDC of $10,127 for a 3/4-inch meter. That's about $402 higher than that charge is today. On the sewer side, $3,590 is that calculated maximum, and that's actually about an $18 decrease from where we're at today. And in stormwater, $1,772 per equivalent service unit, and again, that's about a $19 decrease from where we're at today. So overall, the total increase for a single-family new connection is about $365. Talk just a bit more about the charge basis to add a little bit more information here. For the water SDC, we talked about meter capacity equivalents, and that's how the charge is determined. So for a 3/4-inch meter, it is that $10,127. The charge will increase for larger meter sizes based on the flow capacity of the meter. A sewer SDC is calculated based off of residential capacity equivalents, and so one single-family residence is one RCE, and that's the $3,590. For non-residential RCEs, those are calculated based off of fixture units and a projection of flow. Stormwater SDC, again, is calculated based off those equivalent service units, so that one single-family residence, one ESU, at that $1,772. One ESU is 2,600 square feet of impervious surface area, so non-residential ESUs are calculated based off of that amount of impervious surface area and the definition of an ESU. At the end of the day, these are calculated maximum charges for each of the utilities. By policy, they can be set lower than the calculated maximum, but not higher. If they are set lower, it's really a shifting of the burden, so existing customers would need to make up the difference. And then, as you see here, recommended to continue to annually adjust by that construction cost index, like the city has historically done. That's really why we've been able to keep up with these charges and the costs, you know, like we were able to do over the last 10 years, without making a more substantial change after that time has gone by. So obviously, we want to look at what our neighbors are doing here, even though, you know, just like rates, these are kind of apples-to-oranges comparison. Every system is different and has different infrastructure requirements. But on the water side, we see Auburn towards the top of this list based off of the current charge, and we are projecting to increase that a bit. I will call out, though, any of these cities that have the asterisk next to them, so Isakwa, Kirkman, Bellevue, Redmond, all are required to pay the Cascade Water Alliance Capital Facilities Charge. That's a regional charge and could add anywhere from $68,000 to these charges as well. So that would move Auburn just a little bit down this comparative list. Looking at the sewer SDC, so for Auburn here, we're right kind of in the, a little lower than middle of the road. Very similarly, though, any of those with that asterisk would also need to pay that King County Regional Connection Charge, including Auburn. And that is a fairly substantial charge. I think it's about $13,500 or so, but typically, that's amortized on a customer's bill for about 15 years, so it's about $70 a month. And then finally, here, SDC for stormwater, just right about the middle of this comparative chart for the City of Auburn here, and there wouldn't be too much of a change with that minor decrease that we projected. Okay, so another kind of switching gears here to talk about the wholesale water rates. So the last wholesale water rate was part of the 2022 rate study update, and these are contract agreements between these wholesale customers. So it's really the contract that governs these rates, and the rates are based on the cost of providing service. There are two existing wholesale customers, and they are different in nature. First is the City of Algonah, and that's a continual wholesale customer, so they're drawing water on a monthly basis from the city. Conversely, Lake Meridian Water District is what's called an interruptible, ready-to-serve upon request customer. So they typically are not drawing water, but the city is ready to serve them water should they request it. So the update here in the current methodology uses the previously established wholesale rate methodology that's been used for several years to determine these rates. It is an industry-standard practice, and it's a utility-based methodology, is how we refer to that. The methodology has three main components: the operating costs, again, those kind of O&amp;M costs that the water utility sees, and the portion of eligible assets allows us to allocate costs to those wholesale customers. In addition to that, we've got an annual depreciation component, so that's meant to represent the wear and tear of our assets that these wholesale customers are causing at the end of the day. And then finally, we can add a return to this to provide that fair rate of return for the past investments made. So those three components come together to form the wholesale rates for each of these entities. So looking at the Algonah wholesale rates here, it is composed of a fixed meter charge. They have got four 8-inch meters currently, and those meter charges are aligned with the retail meter rate, so those will increase up to 7.8% that's proposed. There is also a usage charge here per 100 cubic feet of water. It's at $2.51. Now forecasted to increase to the cost of service in 2026 to $2.71, and then we've got inflationary adjustments after that. So overall, for Algonah, this represents about a $35,000 increase, or about 8% total, so pretty much in alignment with what we saw on the retail side of things. So moving forward to Lake Meridian here, this is a little bit different, as I mentioned, a different type of customer, and there's three main components that make up this rate. The fixed ready-to-serve charge is the charge that's charged every month regardless of whether water is drawn, and it's made in part to recover the costs, to maintain the assets so that they're ready to deliver water if they need to. And it does include a portion of the Tacoma ready-to-serve charge, and we're attempting to pass that on to our wholesale customers. That charge is about $1,592. Now forecasted to increase to $2,131 by 2026 in that cost-of-service update. The usage charge is the delivery rate for using the City of Auburn sources. And right now, on the cost-of-service, we're not assuming that this customer will draw any water for us, but we still have a rate in this in case that they do. If they're drawing from the City of Water and sources, that increase would move from $2.24 to $2.49 for that portion that's drawn from the City of Auburn. If, when Lake Meridian Water District requests water, if the city has to purchase from Tacoma in order to deliver service to them, there would be a surcharge associated with those purchased water costs. So the purchased water surcharge would include the Tacoma peaking rate, as well as the remaining portion of that ready-to-serve charge. So that purchased water surcharge would increase from $1.82 to $2.53 by the 2026 cost-of-service. Now, the biggest increases here were really related to those City of Tacoma charges. Those have increased about 30% since the 2022 study. And in practice, over the last several years, once the cost-of-service rates are updated for wholesale, there haven't been a pass-through of those Tacoma increases until we kind of recalibrate these wholesale rates. So it's a bit of a catch-up process that we're performing here, because we haven't passed those through until now. So that really brings me to the end of our discussion today. As Frank mentioned, looking to get some guidance on moving forward with updated STCs at their maximum calculated levels as presented tonight, as well as those adjusted wholesale rates to the cost of service in 2026, the goal of adopting rates and STCs effective January 1st, 2026.
All right. Council, do we have any questions?
So before we wrap that up, can I add one more thing to what Brooke explained? So on the wholesale rate for Lake Meridian, one of the things that we would like to propose in the code change for that is that we actually incorporate that Tacoma increase on the annual basis for 2027 and 2028, once we know what those increases are. So right now, we don't know what those increases are, but we'd like to do that pass-through so that we're not doing as much catch-up when we do this rate study again in three years. So you'll see that as part of that code language that comes before the council as well.
I have a couple of questions. So the first one, when we were talking about, you know, continuing to do some research around a low-income rate study, on that slide, there was a starting point of housing households, and I was curious where that starting assumption arrived from.
Yeah, absolutely. So we used some census data to determine what the poverty rate was in this area. It was about 7.5% roughly. We applied that to our estimate of single-family accounts to get, again, that rough estimate. And what we've seen is that it just is, it's very different depending on each area that you're in. It's hard to predict how many will actually sign up for the discount, even if they're eligible.
Okay.
Yeah, best guess.
And then if we were exploring having that be in place, do we have a sense of what that criteria might look like, or is that something that would emerge out of additional research?
I think there would be some additional research, although there may be some criteria in place already, so I'm going to turn to Director Thomas to talk about that.
It would probably mirror quite a bit of the documentation that we require now for the low-income senior and the low-income disabled programs that we have. for the low-income senior and the low-income disabled programs that we have. So it, but it is pretty time-intensive on staff's end because it's a lot of documentation collection and verification, just from third-party sources to verify income status.
Okay. Yeah, I had looked at that after the last meeting for the senior and disabled, and there's quite a few questions on that paperwork. So do we have any sense of what the threshold would be for how many people utilizing it would require the additional FTE?
Again, I think a lot more data. Just anecdotally, it's for the 150 or so, the rebate program for the 150 or so seniors that are currently on the program. It's a pretty intensive three months for the existing utility building staff for collecting that data. So I would expect, especially if we want to do, extend that so it's more of an outreach program, probably extending it to different languages so we could really get the most bang for our effort. It's, I'm thinking at least of one full-time FTE to manage the program throughout the year to really reach as many people as possible.
Thank you. Just scanning for other questions that may surface. All right. With the slide where you were talking about the newer stormwater credit for a single-family residential, can you talk me through what an onsite stormwater retention item might be or what a water quality infrastructure might be for a single-family residence?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. So what we're looking at here is these are typically single-family residences that are built in situations where they may have private roads, and they're for private storm systems that they are required to maintain, so not our storm systems. But they are paying the single-family rate similar to anybody else in a residential neighborhood whose storm systems are being managed and maintained by the city of Auburn. So we're trying to find that ground where it's equivalent in that situation. These are not multi-family complexes. These are specifically single-family situations. They're not, because the multi-family already has the ability to get those reductions if they're doing their own stormwater treatment and management and maintenance. And so that's what we're trying to do is identify that small area of, I think it's 653 customers, that we think fall in that category, where they're in a single-family home, but they are maintaining their own systems for their neighborhood in those private street situations.
Yeah, we're not talking about rain barrels. Okay, thank you. And then, just wrapping up at the end with the STCs, because, you know, those are some big numbers around what those costs would be. And of course, we're looking at trying to make sure that we can meet, you know, future housing demands as well. As we look at this, would this also be applicable for, I'm guessing, like the new ADUs that we're making available for future development and code? Or would we, making sure that I understand all the lovely acronyms that we have here. SDC per MCE/RC/ESU, is that ultimately per single-family residence?
Yeah, it depends a little bit, but typically, that's what you would see. So most of these would be per single-family residence. And the ADU question, there's a lot of policy that goes into that. But oftentimes, what we'll see is if they don't need to upsize a meter, for example, they may not need to pay an additional charge. But it's all kind of dependent on how much additional capacity they're requesting. On the sewer side, it may be treated a bit differently. It may be a portion of this charge, maybe an ADU charge, just dependent on how it relates to the single-family usage at the time. So there's a little bit of policy that goes into how cities will handle ADUs with GFCs. But this is often what you would see for a single-family home.
So if I can just add a little bit of clarification. So for an ADU, it depends upon whether they're actually getting a separate water service for that building than the existing water service for the home that's there already. If they're not, they're not going to pay any kind of an upsized charge on that. As Brooke said, if they want to increase the size of their meter, they'll pay the difference between those two meter sizes, so they won't pay the full three-quarter inch. They might get, if they're going to a two-inch meter, they'll get a reduction for what that difference is between that three-quarter inch and that two-inch meter. So it just, it depends upon what they're proposing.
Okay. And then the last piece of that with the STCs, you had made mention that for, I think it was the King County portion of, was it the sewer fee? Which you said could be about $13,000 in addition to our fee. That that was essentially prorated over a longer period of time, I think you said 15 years. For our fees, if we're talking about single-family residences and looking at the SDC charges for these different utilities, at what point would that full amount be due for either a developer or homeowner looking to, you know, build a new?
For the city, I don't believe there's any sort of amortization of those charges. So before or at the time of permitting, I believe.
Correct, but there is a deferral process for all the STCs, which allows a developer to delay paying those STCs until occupancy of the home or sale of the property so that they can do it based upon the income that's coming in from that development.
That is helpful. Thank you. Last call for council. Questions? Did we have any questions from Councilmember Sturgis?
She's not raised her hand.
None, none here. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, continuing forward in our agenda, we have ordinance number 7008. And this is also under Dr. Thomas. This is an ordinance amending sections 3.60.010 and 3.60.020 of the Auburn Municipal Code to authorize an additional 1/10 of 1% sales and use tax for criminal justice purposes in accordance with Section 201, Chapter 350, Laws of 2025, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. Mayor, council, I am here to talk about ordinance 7008. And it's the new 0.1% public safety sales tax that the legislature has recently approved and signed into law. So I wanted to go a little bit over House Bill 2015, which talks about the law that now gives us the authority to implement an additional 0.1%, so 1/10 of 1% of a sales and use tax. It is now a councilmanic option for cities. The, in the law that the legislature adopted, it really had two funding mechanisms. One, giving the cities the ability to implement that 1/10 of 1% for sales and use tax. And it also created some grant opportunities over the next three years that cities can take advantage of. The sales and use tax for criminal justice purposes is pretty broadly written for all criminal justice purposes. It calls out some additional specific allowable uses as well. Whereas the grant option is really focused specifically for the hiring, training, and retention of officers. There's some other rules around the grant. It can only be covered for 75% up to, 75% of an officer's salary, up to $125,000 a year per officer. It has a 25% local match if we are using the grant to pay for salaries and benefits. So although there are two different funding sources, really the eligibility and criteria for both the grant and the sales tax are the same, which I'll talk about on the next slide. I said that there was some additional uses that you could use on the 0.1% sales and use tax for, and that includes domestic violence services, public defenders, diversion and reentry programs, programs to reduce homelessness and improve behavioral health, community outreach and assistance programs, mental health crisis response, alternative response programs, and community placements for juvenile offenders. So they've really written the eligibility to kind of expand just general public safety, which is, I think, what cities and municipalities have been asking for, and the legislature had responded. The 0.1% public safety, that 0.1% public safety sales tax is not new. We have had this option historically, but it required a majority vote of voters. So it wasn't a councilmanic option. And it was limited to just public safety, just a more specific definition of public safety and criminal justice. So this is much more flexible. What we're currently asking in ordinance 7008 is not necessarily for the authority to move forward with asking for any grants. We're really just asking for the 0.1% on the sales and use tax. If we do adopt that, we do have the option later to go and ask for grant funding later. However, we can't ask for grant funding unless we have this 0.1% sales tax in place. So this is the first step really for any additional funding as well. So the requirements to be eligible for implementing the 0.1% sales and use tax is outlined by RCW 43101.540. Essentially, it says that we have to be compliant with all the RCWs of 43.17.425 and 10.93.160. Specifically, it calls out other policies, model policies for our police department, as well as practices regarding use of force, de-escalation tactics, and training addressing firearm relinquishment pursuant to court orders. Another specific call-out in House Bill 2015 is that we also need to have internal policies that are consistent with the Attorney General's Keep Washington Working Act Guide, that we're following that. And I'm going to use some quotes that I've read just to kind of explain what the Keep Washington Working Act Guide is. It's not necessarily intuitive by the title. So it's ensuring the state of Washington remains a place where rights and dignity of all residents are maintained and protected in order to keep Washington working. So what that means is that we don't have policies in place that limit, or that we have policies in place that limit the extent that our PD participates in federal immigration laws. So just what the RCW 43.101.540 says, that we have all of our standard policies and procedures are compliant with existing state law, which, jumping to the end, we are. So there's no concern at this point that we wouldn't be eligible. I've got a list of other requirements that the RCW requires as far as being compliant. What we're going to do, if the council does want to move forward enacting the 0.1% sales tax, the next step is we need to apply with the CJTC. And what they will do is they will review, we will apply with them, and we show that we are compliant with all of the requirements of RCW and to prove our eligibility requirements. They will review our submission. They have 45 days to review our submission and provide us with feedback. If they see that we're lacking any information, or if there's any deficiencies in our existing policies, they will contact our police department, work with our chief. And we have 30 days to respond and provide clarifying documentation. And in total, we have up to 180 days to come into compliance to prove our eligibility. At the end of 180 days, if we're not compliant, then the state treasurer would withhold $100,000 of the tax that we collect, and it would go to the CJTC up until the point we do become compliant. It's not the intent of the CJTC, or obviously the city, to give over any of that $100,000. That $100,000, I don't know if penalty is the right word, but that $100,000 that would be withheld from us makes up almost half of the total amount that we would be collecting each month for the tax. So that would be a pretty significant penalty, if you will, if we aren't, if we can't prove eligibility. So it will, it is in this, it will be the city's priority to prove compliance and eligibility with the CJTC. Once, kind of concurrently with our application with the CJTC, we will also notify the Department of Revenue, our intent to enact the 0.1% sales tax. The DOR requires a 75-day notice, and they only start collection at the beginning of each quarter. So in our case, as long as we have this 0.1% adopted by January 15th, then collection of the sales tax in the city would begin on April 1st. Let's go over our public safety costs and needs. And just an example of what we're looking at 2025, we're going to be looking at the budget amendment next. So this is a little bit of, a little bit of a preview of what you're going to see in the budget amendment request. But some of our immediate needs for 2025 and 2026 as it relates to public safety is our increasing SCORE jail costs, our electronic home monitoring, which is actually small relative to some of our other costs, and then our increasing public defense contract costs over the next year and a half. What we would propose to council is that if we do decide to move forward with the 0.1% public safety sales tax, that we would increase the 2025 estimated budgeted revenue by $2 million to help offset the 2020, the increase to 2026 public safety costs that we're, we expect to experience in 2026. But not to necessarily restrict or commit any of the funding beyond 2026 and to look, when we come forward to the biennial budget, or the biennial budget for 2027 and 2028, really prioritize what our public safety needs are into the next biennium. But again, talking about what are some of those potential costs? Some of the things that we know are coming up and things that we would like the council to start considering. We're not asking that commitment right now, but just thinking about when we get into that biennial budget is potential continued increases for SCORE jail. I'm hoping that those costs don't continue to increase. I'm hoping that as far as our ADP relative to other owner agencies in SCORE is going, is now leveled off. That's why we're seeing a large increase right now in SCORE is that our total relative use of the jail continues to, has continued to increase. Our three-year average has continued to increase relative to the other owner agencies. I'm hoping that we've, we've seen a leveling off. Not that we are necessarily looking to do things differently in our city, but we're hoping that maybe some of the other cities start employing some of the same practices that we do. Additionally, the police department has some enhanced technology needs that they are hoping to have the council consider over the next couple of years. We currently have our Axon contract that is good through the end of 2026. So when we get into 2027, there are some additional technology needs that would really help with policing, that the police department will, will be asking the council more about. That includes improved body cameras, license plate readers on the vehicles, better, more accurate tasers to replace the tasers that they currently have, translation services, like on-demand translation services rather than having to call the translation line, and then real-time crime center. So those are some of the enhanced technology that Axon is able to provide now that the police department would like to be considered beyond 2026. And then there's also...
One second. Councilmember Taylor?
I can save it to the end.
I think, I know, that would be good if the council wants to consider it.
I was just looking at the numbers reduced there for the electronic home monitoring. Is there a reason why that number, it's almost half?
Actually, we're doing a contract change. So we under-budgeted for electronic home monitoring in total currently, or actually through October. We contract, we were contracting out with the city of Renton to do our electronic home monitoring services. They're no longer doing it, and we're actually going to save some money with a third-party vendor. So we have to do a budget amendment to capture what the actual costs are. But because we paid 10 months of the year already to the city of Renton, the increase for 2025 is a little bit greater than our increase for 2026.
So in the, so in the reduction in cost, that's great, saving money. Is that going to affect the amount of people that will be on the home electronic monitoring? Are we just saving money by changing vendors?
I want to clarify that we're, in total, we actually need more budget authority compared to what we currently have budgeted. The cost in 2026 is anticipated to be less. I might send that question, that specific question to Director Martenson to describe how we pay for the electronic home monitoring contract.
Yes, so the city previously had a contract with the city of Renton, and they have ended that contract. And so part of our research in utilizing a different vendor that we had utilized previously before the Renton contract, it actually was a cost savings from the Renton contract. So we anticipated cost savings in 2026 for electronic home monitoring.
Yeah, I understood I understood that part. I was just in terms of the amount of people that would be eligible to be on that. If the cost is going down, that mean less people will be on home mon- home monitoring?
Um, n- no, so it that's actually set by what the prosecutor recommends and what public defense agrees to and what the judge approves. So we don't necessarily know if there's gonna be like sentencing practices or anything where electronic home monitoring would be used, but um and we're not noticing that trend going down, but that's all dependent upon all three of those parties reaching agreement, but just the cost per individual is going down.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
So moving on to some other considerations um be that we could use the point one percent public safety sales tax for in twenty twenty seven and beyond is a potential that our public defense contracts continue to increase. You can see that we are asking for more money in twenty five and twenty six. A lot of that is directly related to um just the the state mandates around um the the number of cases that our public defend our public defense attorneys can cover in the city. So we need the co- the overall costs for those those services are increasing due to supply and demand essentially. Um and we are looking for a new public defender right now, and those contract increases are looking to increase pretty significantly over what we had originally budgeted for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. So our our budget amendment, this go-round, does reflect those cost increases. We're hoping that they don't, similar to SCORE, we hope we hope that we've leveled out in in that peak of the the cost, the increased cost for those contracts, but there is the potential that those costs continue to increase um beyond twenty twenty six. Um so putting that in as a placeholder for potential needs beyond twenty twenty six. And then the last bullet point here is additional debt service for a new public safety building, which I think is probably the most significant thing for the council to consider. Uh, we currently have in the twenty twenty six budget approximately uh two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars in debt service in the general fund um as part of the cap uh the facilities master plan that are related to our our public safety building and some improvements. So we had originally identified instead of built back in twenty twenty when we were doing our facilities master plan, we had identified rather than building an entire new public safety building, that we would do seven million dollars approximately in upgrades to our existing building. And the total debt service on that is estimated to be about two hundred and s- uh two hundred and sixty seven thousand, give or take. It depends on how much we actually how much the bond that we issue, the rates on the bond, the term of the bond, and the actual amount that we issue. But as we've as the last five years have progressed, I I think that it's in hearing what the council said at our last council retreat that we had that a public safety building is a priority for the council and for the community. So if we have a new funding source available, is it worth considering saving the seven million dollars in kind of Band-Aid fixes at our in our existing facility and maybe bite the bullet and and build an actual um an actual new public safety building on the the multi-car property that we had purchased a couple of years ago? The potential impact would be an additional one point four million dollars. This, again, is just a placeholder. It really depends on how how big of a building, um how uh how much the building would cost, um what our our term is, and what the rates are at the time we decided to to go out for bond. But really just throwing this out as initial contemplation consideration for the council when we go into the twenty seven twenty eight budget preparation, if we do move forward with the point one percent public safety sales tax, that this is potentially something that we could consider um as an additional funding source. So revenue impacts, which I think is uh probably one of the most important considerations, I think, that the council has. How does this impact our overall sales tax in the the city of Auburn? So currently, the tax rate in the city of Auburn is ten point three percent right now as of today. However, on January one, it will be ten point four percent because King County also has the one the point one percent public safety sales and use tax option, and they have um they have levied that. So that has been adopted by the King County Council, and beginning January one, they're taking their point one percent. So at the very least, beginning January one, sales tax in Auburn will be ten point four percent. But if we're looking at today's ten point three percent, the city of Auburn collects point nine percents of that total amount, and I I always like to do my little dollar bill, just to highlight that, yes, ten point three percent is a lot, it is a high tax rate. The city does only collect point nine per um nine cents of every dollar paid. That is an old graphic. It says eight cents to the city. We do actually bring in nine cents um on every dollar paid. For every point one percent that we levy, so this this ordinance in particular, um would bring in an estimated two point seven million dollars a year. I put an asterisk there because there's been a lot of changes in the sales tax laws in Washington um that changed October first of this year, which means that there is actually a larger tax base. There are more services now that are now considered sales taxable. We really have no idea to know know how much that sales tax base is going to increase until we actually start collecting um this actual sales tax revenue. So at um I would say at a very conservative amount, we would expect the point one percent to bring in two point seven million dollars, assuming the taxability of services as they were on September thirty September thirtieth, with the potential to bring in more. So how does the city of Auburn's tax rate compare to all of our neighboring cities? I just went um a little bit south and a little bit north along the uh Puget Sound Corridor and comparing our tax rate, I noticed the typo in in the handout that um or in the PowerPoint that was uploaded, uh the point nine percent, the the decimal got carried over, so it looks like it's a nine and a half percent current city rate, it is actually point nine four percent. So on my PowerPoint that I have here, it's the updated version, and I've adjusted it for all of the other cities. As you can see, it's very, very similar. Um ours, um the city of Auburn, uh the city of Pacific, and the city of Renton um are a little bit higher, point one percent higher than some of the other cities, and that's because we have the point one percent transportation benefit district that we have in our sales tax. And I've there are a couple of cities that I've put asterisks next to. The city of Fife, the city of Des Moines, and the city of Bering Buring have notified at the DOR that as of January one, they will be implementing the point one percent TBD in their cities as well. So those numbers are also changing. Um I expect more cities to follow suit and start implementing the point one percent TBD. Also comparing cities that we know for sure have also um notified the DOR that they want to implement their point one percent public safety sales tax beginning January one is um also is the city of Algonah, the city of Kent, the city of Des Moines, the city of T- Sea-Tac, and the city of Renton. We're assuming more cities are going to also be following suit because it is such a a broad application of the sales tax. Um but these are these are the cities that have notified um DOR at that have actually adopted um the point one percent sales tax so far. I um have been asked to provide what does a point one percent impact have on taxpayers in Auburn? Difficult to quantify because every household's a little bit different, how people spend their money is a little bit different. So assuming the average household income of ninety five thousand dollars in the city of Auburn, and assuming twenty percent of a household's income is spent on taxable items, um that point one percent would be about nineteen dollars a year per household. Of course, larger purchases, if you're spending, maybe if you spent thirty percent um of your of your gross income a year, that would that would increase maybe on on an annual basis or might fluctuate on an annual basis, but just assuming uh uh with the average income in the city of Auburn, a spending twenty percent of their gross income on taxable sales taxable items, that's about a nineteen dollar a year impact. And that's assuming you're spending a hundred percent of all your taxable sales in the city you live in. It could it could vary from where where you spend your your money. I want to point out, though, I put the estimated annual sales tax impact in the column to the furthest right for each city. So you can really see if you are spending your money in, let's say, Sumner, which is much lower than any of the others um of other cities compared to some of the other cities that are closer to the ten point one, ten point two, and ten point three per percent sales tax or tax total. It annually, it isn't that large of an impact in total. It's about a hundred and thirty dollar difference from the very lowest sales tax city to the highest sales tax city. With that, um council obviously has a couple of different options with ordinance seven zero zero eight. If you do opt to implement the point one percent sales tax, this would be adopted next week. We would also be making an adjustment to the mid-biennial budget amendment to add two million dollars in revenue to the twenty twenty six revenue that uh accounts for nine months of of the sales tax in twenty twenty six. We would move forward to applying for the tax authorization with the CJTC. We will send the tax ordinance to DOR to begin collections on April first, and then we'll continue through um council conversations through our uh council retreat at the beginning of um twenty twenty six when we build the twenty twenty seven twenty twenty eight budget to really prioritize how do we really spend this money moving forward. If council does not want to move forward with ordinance seven zero zero eight, we would still need to ask for the budget amendments in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six for our increased public safety costs, and we would, moving into twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight, figure out how do we finance some of those um those public safety costs increase that we know are coming, and we'll need to prior prioritize those with existing funding when we do the budget in twenty seven twenty eight.
All right, council, do we have questions? Councilmember Emma?
I'm the one. When I see tax increase, I thought like, oh, no, but just reading and full understanding what's the benefit will come, I think I really like it, especially we just had presentation from the chief, and they find out that our officer, they have their camera, will allow them to get uh live translation for most diverse people, which will help us. The other thing I like is that finally, we may be able to build a new uh station, good station, to allow us have more officer. So even with the increased nineteen dollar, maybe more, but that's what public ask us, that's what they need, more officer. So so thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Sturgis, I see you've got your hand up.
Thank you. Um, so just to confirm, I think you answered that I you did answer it, but I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, um, because my ears are a little clogged. Um, so we can't apply for any of the available grants if we don't enact the tax, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then so based on that, um, what type of grants are available? Is there do we have access to that type of information?
It's there hun- it there's a hundred million dollars set aside for grants. We can apply for funding. I think we would need to identify how much funding that we're if we were to apply, we'd identify how much it is that we're asking for, and it would have to be limited to um the hiring, the retention, and the training of officers. So um I think that it it's limited in duration. I I don't, we're not saying that we wouldn't be interested, but I I think that we always like the guaranteed long-term funding, and with the with the grants, it is it is only three years. So that once that money is gone, or at the end of three years, that money's no longer available, and there is a matching requirement as well. So we would have to come up with an additional funding source to come up with our twenty five percent match.
Okay, but we can do both and, right?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Sturgis, did you have any other questions?
I think you answered it. I was wanting to see if the grants would be able to help us with our um innovation and and wellness designs for the new public safety building, but you you said that it was the grants are only available for the training of um hiring of the officers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But not the tax?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, the first one was, I remember hearing at some point that if we didn't implement this right away, that there's a certain runway that we would, if we wanted to do it in the future, there's sort of a deadline. Do you know that also?
Twenty twenty eight is when our opportunity to levy the taxes begins.
Next question is, you had mentioned that we know January first, twenty twenty six, that our tax rate's gonna go to the ten point four because King County has, you know, opted to levy their point one percent. In much the same way that we would have to identify how we would spend our point one percent, do we know what they're planning to allocate their point one percent to?
I I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know, and I'm not sure if they've actually they're probably adopted their ordinance pretty broadly, which is for public safety and criminal justice services.
Okay. Uh, is there any way we could double check on that and see?
We I I can pull the their ordinance and see what. I'm telling you, I I from what I've seen, though, most of the ordinances are pretty broadly written, that no nobody's committed an ordinance to a specific to specific uh spending at this point.
Um, and then I was curious on our, I think it was slide three, where it was talking about what those requirements are um based on state code for imposing the sales and use tax. Uh, there's quite a bit on through the bottom half of the slide around different types of uh trainings that we are required to do, and I think you mentioned that there wasn't any concern that we'd be able to meet that criteria. Do you or uh uh do you know where we're at with those currently? Particularly the hundred percent officer completion rate, uh always makes me nervous when I see you've got to have a hundred percent of anything to be eligible.
Yes, this is Chief Sambets. I think we would have to go dig into our data, but our officers have already been plugging away at a lot of this training. Uh, there's only one training, I believe, as we've gone through the al- application process. There was only one training that the CJTC was required to create that they had not created yet, and so we are uh finding other avenues, working with the CJTC to find avenues to create that training and have our officers take it. Uh, everything else, we could grab the data on who has done what training. A lot of it's CJTC um required training, and they give you about three years oftentimes to to complete the training. So um in reference to that specific uh bullet point, uh I would imagine that a lot of our officers have done it, but as part of the application process, we will ensure that our our staff um has done the required training and that we are uh dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
I have an answer for what they're.
Uh, Mayor Beck. So King County uh is going to use their public safety sales tax for preventing layoffs in the sheriff's office and supporting core law enforcement functions, sustained courtroom operations and fund public defense and victim advocacy programs, support behavioral health services, uh investment programs for diversion, gun violence prevention, and domestic violence response, and to fill a budget deficit and maintain existing levels of public safety service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Um. Sorry, I did have one other question, which is, I think back to, and this may not be in your wheelhouse to answer, but one that I'm curious about is, I know in our last uh municipal FSA review that we had gone over that because of our daily averages for our population and SCORE, that we're anticipating this higher cost. Uh, but that jump from a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to, you know, one point one five uh million is considerable, right? Do we have any strategy for looking at how we're utilizing SCORE uh to contain that in any way, shape, or form?
Um, I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna answer the first part of that question first and why we're seeing a large increase. So the first had to do with, there was a five hundred thousand dollar funding source that was uh removed from the SCORE. It was a um it was a con- it was a contract opportunity that SCORE had originally budgeted for. Um, so that five hundred thousand dollars then had to be put back redistributed among the owner agencies, which were one of them. Then simultaneously- Then simultaneously to that happening every year, our allocation of the totals, uh, SCORE costs are reallocated based on our ownership usage. So, $500,000 is being put on to, on the contract agencies, and then on top of that, our relative use increased from, uh, 42% to 47%. So our, uh, what we had originally budgeted was that we would be 42% of the jail costs. We jumped up to actual 47% based on our three-year average. So those two things together for 2026 is what increased, increased most of that $1.1 million. Then there's a third piece, which is that they are now starting to charge for virtual court, uh, virtual court administrative fee, based on the total number of hearings that we, that are, are seen through virtual court up at the jail. Our cost is about $283,000 a year. So that's on top of our ADP usage. All cities are, it's a per, it's a per cost usage. So all the cities are sharing that cost, um, relatively the same. But that's where that 1.1% increase, uh, or the 1.1 million, where most of it's coming from. As far as the, how we utilize the jail, I, I don't know if I, I'm the one qualified, like you said, to answer that question, Assistant Chief Betts, did you wanna have anything that you wanted to add on the utilization of SCORE?
I'm not sure what exactly you're looking for in your question. Go ahead.
Sure. Um, and thank you for that, I recognize it. And it may not be just one voice answering that question, but perhaps something that we revisit at our next strategic retreat, which is for our average daily population, in how we're handling crime and safety within our community, are the tactics that we're using, which seem to be increasingly expensive for any number of reasons, many of which we've heard tonight, is that effective in reducing crime at the end of the day, right? Is that effective in keeping our community safe? And so when we're looking at making investments going forward, whether it's into new facilities or whether it's into additional public defenders or additional, you know, SCORE fees or, you know, virtual court fees, is when we aggregate all of that together, are we safer at the end of the day, right? And I bring that up because as we've had our community court, we know that that has been very successful in reducing recidivism, where people wind up committing crimes again to actually help them get back on track. And so I'm just hoping if we're going to explore, you know, increasing sales tax, which we know tends to affect, you know, all homes and people who are, you know, struggling households the most, because sales tax tends to affect those homes the most. And we're trying to keep the community safe, are the tactics that we're looking to implement, if we put this in place, going to result in materially better safety at the end of the day? So I think it's probably more just me commenting rather than asking a question, which is that when we look at how we would want to apply this and what those future considerations are, just double checking that, uh, the use of this could potentially go to community court as municipal court comes back into Auburn or other, uh, whether it's diversion or whether it's treatment or whether it's things that would keep people from continuing to reoffend.
Councilmember, uh, I gave a presentation recently to council about public safety impacts and crime, crime trends in the last few years. And I would say, uh, without a doubt, that our tactics and the way that we've utilized SCORE has absolutely positively impacted this community, and that the businesses would tell you the exact same thing, um, and the data tells you the exact same thing. So I think objectively, anyone can look at the data and say that, uh, what we have done here as an entity and as a police department has positively impacted this community, and there is a cost to what we've done, but, um, there is no doubt, looking at the data, uh, what the impact has been and how positive it's been.
Right. And thank you for that. I remember seeing those numbers, seeing that, uh, you know, autothos had gone from, I think, 600 a year down to about 300, so almost a drop in half. So I agree that you guys have had tremendous results in the past few years. I'm just looking at long-term sustainability going forward and making sure we have that right mixture of both, you know, arresting and charging where appropriate, as well as getting people into whatever treatments if needed. Um, we did have Councilmember Sturgis's hand first.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment on your question, but whatever you want to do.
Uh, Councilmember Sturgis and then Mayor Backus.
Mayor, go ahead, Mayor had, go ahead and go, mine is, mine will go after you.
So I would argue that we know that we would have spent the same amount one way or the other. Uh, there would have been lost opportunity costs, there would have been businesses leaving our area or not locating in our area, had we not implemented the enhanced patrols and other opportunities for individuals in our community to understand that committing crimes in the city of Auburn is not an option for them. That was part of the decision-making process when we, when we decided to do this.
Councilmember Sturgis?
I was just gonna add, I actually was supposed to meet with Cheryl today for our one-on-one, but, um, I wasn't able to because I'm sick and so, but it's the top thing on my, uh, uh, ask for the agenda for our next special focus area meeting for Muni Services, is to, um, uh, really have a, a deep dialogue and, and, um, have Chief Collier bring in, um, updates for us to come back and share with you, um, for them to share, uh, one of these upcoming council members around, you know, the work that the wellness program designer has been doing, the chief and, and assistant chief and, um, and, uh, the impact that it's made in the engagement in officers that, uh, through leadership. We have one of the, you know, highest engaged departments right now, and we have, um, high percentage of officers attending training and showing up, signing up for it and showing up. And then we have, um, one of the highest percentages of officers completing, um, uh, additional training in, in addition to what's, what's just required. And so, uh, we have ongoing training happening, and we just aren't quite aware of it, um, as community members. And so, um, we, this will be a topic that we bring to, um, our next focus area, and then also have, um, the chief get an opportunity to, uh, bring the team to come share with council, because we, we've got a lot to be proud of, of what's been built in the last three to four years. Um, and the other piece of it is, is that, um, you know, our department is ahead of the curve when it comes to, uh, you know, some of these interesting partnerships with community organizations where they're, you know, going through and, and learning empathy training and, um, how to really show up to a situation with empathy. And, um, so the creativity and the, not only just the innovation with technology, um, it's, you know, the, the entire department is, is very on board with all of this training, and we have a lot to be proud of. So that's a topic that we will bring in the next coming meetings, um, so that that can be shared with you more in depth, because I think it's, is so timely too, to be able to follow the, the data that you shared, Assistant Chief, because it is, the results are showing that it is making our community safer. But, um, and then that's also another topic that I have as an ask on, when we rev, go back to reviewing the rules and procedures as council members, um, I would like to figure out, you know, how do we make a change that says every council member at a minimum has to do one ride along a year during their four-year elected term, so that each and every one of us are required to see what's happening out in the field and have a relevant view on an annual basis, um, instead of just when there's election time around? So I think we'll, we'll be able to really, um, show and, and share with the community the great things that are happening, because there, there's a lot out there that's happening that we can, we can be proud of.
Thank you, Councilmember Sturgis, uh, and thank you, Mayor and Assistant Chief Betts. Just to clarify, my statement was not a criticism, it's just looking at the reality of what the costs are for criminal justice. And to make sure that if we're looking to levy additional sales tax for our community, that we're as thoughtful, uh, as we can in that approach, in what we put it for, and making sure that our approach to justice continues to be one that matches our community's needs. And if we feel we're on the right track, great, and if we feel that there are other things that we could bring into this or adjust with this, really just looking forward to what those possibilities could be. So, thank you. Do we have any other questions on this part of the presentation?
All right. Uh, moving on to the next item in our agenda, that would be ordinance number 7,000. This is an ordinance amending the city's 2025, 2026 biennial budget.
All right, thank you. And as you were reading ordinance 7,000, I realized my error on, on my presentation slide, on the front of my presentation slide, and we're actually, should not say ordinance 7008, should say ordinance 7,000. So this biennial, or this budget amendment is a little bit different than the normal budget amendments that we normally do each quarter. Uh, this is our big mid-biennial budget amendment. It is, um, the end of our first year of our biennium, and we are required, um, by law to do a major general fund revenue source review when we're doing our, our biennial budget amendment, to make sure that we are taking into consideration any major changes in significant revenue sources, um, in addition to any adjustments that we need to make to, um, spending for both 2025 as well as the second year as we go into 2026. Uh, so I've packaged that also with our 2026 property tax levy, since that is our most significant revenue source for the general fund. And since we do have to adopt that levy every year, and it has to be filed with King County by November 30th, I've packaged our, uh, those three items all in one. So we're going to get, um, a package deal right now. So our upcoming, so trying to organize all of the things that we've been talking about and the things that we, um, are going to continue talking about, and then what we're asking council to review and adopt, uh, next week at the regular council meeting. So we actually have had, we have a utility rate study that we do every three years. Um, we just had the second presentation of two presentations, um, earlier this evening. We are going to be asking for that to be adopted next week. Um, also tonight, we reviewed the .1% public safety sales tax. If, um, the council would like to go forward, we're asking for adoption of that next, next council meeting. And then there's two, two more pieces that, um, two more ordinances, and that's the 2026 property tax levy that I mentioned and the mid-biennial budget review. We actually have to have public hearings on both of those items. So prior to adoption next week, we will have a public hearing on both the mid-biennial budget review and the property tax levy, and then, um, adoption of those related ordinances following the public hearing next week. So to reiterate, the mid-biennial budget amendment, um, for the general fund has three major components. Um, the first component is what makes it different from our normal budget amendment processes. So in that, we have a review of our major revenue sources, which is an alignment of our 2025, 2026, um, revenues and, um, accumulated reserve fund transfer for your consideration. We've also got our 2026 property tax levy, which we do annually. Um, and then the total impact of those, those items is, um, negative $11.7 million. I'll talk about that later. It actually will pop up in our other non-general fund. So even though we're talking about transferring some money from the general fund, it does pop up in our special revenue funds. Um, and then we're also requesting our regular budget amendment for, budget amendment for operational needs in this mid-biennial budget amendment, and then potentially adding that $2 million in 2026 for the .1% public safety sales tax. So those are the three major impacts, or the three major changes that this, this budget amendment has in the general fund. And then there's also, um, changes in our non-general fund, funds as well. So we have some regular budget amendments for operational needs and all of our other, our, all of our other funds, as well as some capital project adjustments as well. So first, we're going to review our major revenue sources, compare our 2025 and 2026 revenue budget compared to what, where we think we're going to end 2025 and 2026 revenue based on our projections that we're seeing so far in 2025. Our original combined budget for 2025, 2026 in the general fund is $213.6 million. After making our adjustments to our major revenue fund sources, um, we are estimated to collect a total of $217.2 million, um, by the end of 2026. I've highlighted the four revenue sources, um, that we're going to be seeing changes for in the mid-biennial budget amendment. That's property tax, BNO tax, our utility tax, and intergovernmental revenue are the four main categories that we are adjusting revenue. The first is our property tax levy. We're, we're making a change in our, in our property taxes, um, our 2026 property tax for two reasons. One, we have our property tax levy, we've got our assessed valuation from the, the county, um, based as, from today's numbers, as well as, um, some estimates based on what we've been collecting, our historical, uh, collection, our percentage collection of what we've levied. Before we get into that, I want to talk about ordinance 7003, which sets the 2026 property tax levy. Our current assessed valuation for 2026 is $19.6 billion, which is about a 2.4% increase over our current, uh, assessed valuation for 2025. So when we're calculating our 2026 levy, though, we start at what we actually levied in 2025, which was $25.5 million, or almost $25.6 million. We add our 1%, which is our statutory limit of 1%, so 1% of $25.5 million is $255,000. We add any new construction, so that's construction that was added this year but isn't currently on the, the tax rolls. So anything that was added this year wasn't on the tax rolls. We actually get to collect that property tax next year, but it's collected at this year's rate. So they pop up on the property tax rolls, we, um, we charge them at the 2025 rate. Um, that's $176,000 based on the new, the new construction estimates for 2025. And then we have, uh, refund levies and adjustments made by the, by the state, so that we don't have any control. These are the, the state estimate of refund levies and adjustments, um, in our, in our property tax. They're estimating that we get an additional $125,000, um, for 2026. That brings our total property tax levy, um, estimated property tax levy to $26.1 million. What that means for our levy rate, that we back into our levy rate using that $19.6 billion divided by 1,000, and the estimated levy rate is a $1.33 per thousand. Um, the actual levy rate right now in 2025 is a $1.32. So pretty, pretty close, not much of a change, and that's because the total assessed valuation is increasing at about the same rate of that 1% plus new construction. So we're asking, in the general fund revenue alignment, we're taking into consideration our 2026 property tax levy of, of $26.1 million. And what we're seeing in our collection rates for, typically I budget 98% collection of what we levy. So what we see in the budget isn't 100% of our levy, I usually budget it 98%, but what we've been seeing, kind of our rolling average over the last three to five years, we're collecting about 99%. So we're on track to collect close 99% of what we levied in 2025. So I'm asking to do a $300,000 adjustment for 2025, and then a 99% for 2026 would be actually a $700,000 adjustment, um, on top of what we currently have budgeted in property tax. For utility taxes, we are trending upwards on our collection for our solid waste utility tax, um, by $400,000. We expect to see that trend into 2026 as well, so increasing that prop, that utility tax, or the utility tax collection in both 2025 and 2026. Our electric utility is trending higher in 2025. I'm not proposing to increase it for 2026 yet, just because our electric utilities tend to be cyclical, depending on what climate change is doing in the current year. It seems to be a little bit chillier this year, so we are, um, proposing to increase it by $200,000 this year. Um, BNO tax, we're proposing a $1.7 million increase just for 2025. What we're collect, what we're trending is about $1.7 million above what we budgeted for, and that's almost entirely attributed to delinquent tax collect. So that's due to tax, we collected this year, but it's due to prior years. Um, assuming that we collect only what is due to us in 2026, our $10.1 million budget is right on track with what, uh, we expected to collect in 2026, so no adjustment for 2026. Then we have our tribal compact with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, and we know for sure that we are, were awarded $120,000 less than what we had budgeted, so we want to adjust that revenue down 120,000. We have been put on notice that the money available, all of the money available for 2026 and beyond will continue to decrease based on the, the revenue source that they have available. So bringing down what we, we currently have budgeted $1.6 million in revenue. So bringing down what we, we currently have budgeted $1.6 million in revenue for the compact in 2026, we want to adjust that down $300,000, assuming that the total funding source is not going to be available next year. And then the final adjustment is to move some of our fund balance that we have in the general fund into our cumulative reserve fund, which is our savings account, is the, kind of the common vernacular for what we call the cumulative reserve fund. And this is some trend analysis, so you can see where our fund balance is compared to what we had budgeted. I have our, along the very bottom, you can see the actual numbers. The chart shows where our fund, our fund balance has been since 2020 and what it's forecasted to be through 2030. The actual numbers are along the bottom. So you can see, we ended 2024 higher than we had originally budgeted for. We ended just shy of $61 million, which is pretty significant. That's a combination of collecting revenue above and beyond what we had been budgeting for the last couple of years, as well as underspends in the budget. You can see how that fund balance has picked up. The last time we did a transfer to our cumulative reserve fund was in 2022. You can see that dip in 2022. And that was when the council had re-looked at our cumulative reserve fund policy and how we were going to fund that cumulative reserve fund moving forward. We are to the point now where it's time to move some of the money out of the general fund into the cumulative reserve fund. Because what we would consider those revenues above and beyond what we budgeted, as well as the underspend, are really kind of one-time sources, not ongoing sources. We want to put them into our savings account where we rely, that's what we use for our one-time programs. So what our cumulative reserve fund is, is used for economic downturn and stabilization, capital and one-time programs, and catastrophic events. We also have some money in there for debt service requirements as well. Our target balance for that cumulative reserve fund is 11, 11 to 31% of our general fund expenditures, which is anywhere between 12.6 and $35.5 million. We currently have a fund balance of $33.4 million. However, a lot of this money has already been committed to be spent down between now and 2030, between our, our police take-home vehicle program, our parking lot, our parking lot that we need to design and build, as well as we have $16 million roughly dedicated to economic stabilization and catastrophic events. So that leaves us with about $7 million currently in the cumulative reserve fund that could be dedicated towards one-time and capital programs. So with an infusion from the general fund, that would kind of get that $7 million, that $7 million balance back up for any one-time capital needs that we have, that we haven't currently planned for and our capital facilities plan. It also gives us something to consider when we're talking about capital priorities in our 2027-2028 budget. I think it all kind of goes in hand with the 0.1% public safety sales tax as well. It's just, it's money for the council to consider for those important one-time programs, not necessarily ongoing maintenance and operations of the general fund. So going into the second piece of the mid-biennial budget amendment, this is what we would normally look at, what we would normally be looking at as a normal budget amendment. So these are just our normal housekeeping items for the general fund. A lot of new grants that we've received over, that we've been awarded over the last quarter, getting those revenues in and the corresponding expenditures for those grants. I highlighted those public safety increases. Those really are the lion's share of the 2025 and 2026 expenditure adjustments. Are those increased public safety costs. We also have the police take-home vehicle cost of $685,000. There has been some overages on the cost of the program above and beyond what we had originally budgeted out of the cumulative reserve fund. So we're, we're asking to pay for the, the overage out of the, the general fund. And then the other big increase that doesn't have an offsetting revenue is the parks irrigation. It, with water rates having increased a little bit every year, every year, we've held the, the actual expenditure in the budget for irrigating parks constant for the last several years. And the cost of irrigating the parks has just now exceeded that baseline budget that we've been holding the parks to year over year. So the park director has asked us to please consider increasing the budget so we can pay for those water bills and keeping those parks nice and green. And then the third piece to the general fund budget amendment that we're asking is adding the $2 million in sales tax revenue to 2026. We've talked about this, this would, already, this would help offset the cost of the SCORE jail increases, as well as the public defense contract increases in 2026. And then for the council to consider future public safety uses during the 2027 and the 2028 budget development, but not in this budget amendment now. So all other funds, these are all of the other operating adjustments to all of other funds that are not the general fund. There's, the net impact is actually only, only a million dollars over the, the 2025 and 2026. Most of these adjustments are offset with other revenue sources, whether it's insurance recoveries or grants. And then the third is, the third, the, the second piece to, adjustment to all other funds is our capital adjustments. I highlighted, I think most, I highlighted the three most noteworthy items I think the council would be interested in, and that is the Postmark Alley and New Park Project. So we are combining those two projects. We have some residual money left over in the Postmark building project, and that was meant for, for parking lot redevelopment. We've saved some of that money. We want to combine that with the new park project money and some of the grant revenue that we've received for that alleyway project. So we can actually get more efficiency by combining those projects and doing one big project all at once for that whole parking lot and alleyway development. What you're not seeing here is the total, combining those two project budgets is about a million dollars, but we would like to add another $100,000, because the total project would be about 1.1 million. We would be using park impact fees to help supplement those two budgets when we combine those two budgets. So it only looks like $100,000, but actually the combined project is going to be closer to 1.1 million. We've also included the golf facility improvement fee of $106,000. That was a new fee that we included in the fee schedule back in October. Just, this budget amendment is recording the additional revenue we expect to receive and then the capital expenditures for the capital and maintenance of, the capital maintenance of the golf course. And then the other, the last piece is the MNO facility improvements phase one. There are some additional costs needed for the, the building out and the enhancements of the MNO facility. And then we are proposing to use $400,000 in REITs, our real estate excise tax, to pay for those increased costs at the MNO facility. So our next steps is to have those public hearings that I was talking about next week at the beginning of the council meeting for the mid-biennial budget review, which reviewed our significant revenue sources for the general fund, as well as a public hearing on our 2026 property tax levy. And then the adoption of potentially up to four different ordinances related to all of our, our conversations this evening.
Council, do we have any questions for Director Thomas? Councilmember Troutman?
What's the improvement of the golf course? $106,000?
There is not a specific improvement. So there was a need, there's, there's just general major maintenance and improvements that need to be made at the golf course, just to keep it maintained. And in order to pay for those improvements, we are implementing a golf course improvement fee, a capital improvement fee with each round of golf. And with that, as those major maintenance items need to be done, it's a funding source. I know that the park director is going to be putting together specific projects as we get into the mid, into the 2027-2028 project. And those major projects will be identified in that plan. Julie, I don't know if you wanted to add anything extra?
I can just add, it's like T, T-box improvements or GRI improvements or the major maintenance items. It's not big capital projects, but it's smaller projects that we compete against the general fund budget to get funding for that. And so by adding this facility improvement fee, it's a more of a user fee for the golfer and they're the ones who benefit from that improvement. And so that's, this fee will help cover those minor improvements.
That's great. We went and played golf this Sunday and had a lot of comments from the people that were out there playing, how nice our course is. Thank you.
Did we have any questions from online?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Sturgis?
Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. For moving the, the funds from the general fund to the cumulative reserve fund, does that, you have the savings account, does that allow us to earn a higher interest income?
Not necessarily. We pool all of our cash for investment purposes. So all of our cash citywide is pooled and invested as such. It's just where we are accounting for the cash.
Okay. So if we needed the funds to be moved back to general funds, is it, you know, is it a fairly easy process for you to be able to, to go through?
Absolutely, yes. We, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
I have one question for, and maybe I'm just misremembering this. For the police take-home vehicles, I thought we were doing a lot of funding for that out of ARPA. Was that not one?
No. No. We, at the very beginning, we used some of our ARPA for the hiring bonuses and some retention bonuses and some equipment, some technology equipment, a small amount for technology equipment. But that was the extent ARPA was used for the police department.
Okay, that's fine. I just, for some reason, I was mixing line items in my head. All right. Council, do we have any other questions? If we do move the, on your slide for the general fund revenue realignment, if we take the 15 million and move it into the cumulative reserve fund, where will that leave us at, after that's completed?
So you can see, if you, if we moved it, I'm looking to, two years out, it would leave us at, ah, where's my?
Because I wasn't sure.
I moved it so through, we would meet our, we would be at about 20, this does assume the, the move out of 15, of 15 million dollars. So what you're seeing along the bottom, so these numbers are assuming a transfer out of the 15 million dollars. So for 2026, we would end an estimate of $39.8 million.
With the move?
Yes.
That's what I wasn't sure with the diagram, if that was pre or post the 15 million move. Okay, great. That answers my questions. Council, last call? You don't see any? All right. And then Director Thomas, did you have anything else that you would want to do for agenda item ordinance number 7003? It seemed like that was wrapped in here.
It's all, it's all wrapped in the conversation, yeah.
Back to you, Dr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for all your presentations.
Thank you.
Council, we've come to the end of our agenda.